Dr. Coleman, can you hear me?
Yeah. Let's fill this one voice just the now called order, it's January twenty fifth. So it's with a high school and virtually named. This meeting has been announced and properly advertised according to the requirements of the Breaking of Information Act of meetings. Uh, the record reflects the form of its presence. The House of Representatives, the board can take legal action. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Jordan if he would have our invitation.
No, that's great. Uh, dear Father, thank you for this day, a day that we've never seen before, dear Lord, a day that we'll never see again. Uh, dear Lord, I just ask that you, uh, lay a healing hand on those who are sick and unwell at this time, dear Lord, and comfort their families. Dear Lord, I ask that you continue to bless the staff, educators, administration, uh, at this time, dear Lord, and help them see their way through. Dear Lord, I also ask that you, uh, bless us and show compassion and love on this board. Uh, so as we can make the decisions needed for all students in this county, in your heaven and name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We received a copy of the minutes from the November ninth, twenty twenty meeting, the November sixteenth, twenty twenty meeting, and the December fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Now, I would like to pay a question to, um, to the doctor of minutes.
Motion.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Jordan, second by Ms. Nichols, any discussion? All in the favor, signature by raising your hand. Good, stand up. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, Dr. Livingston.
No change, Dr. Coleman.
I'd like to motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Holloway, second by Mr. Jordan. All in the favor, signature by raising your hand, say aye. Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the election of the board officers. Uh, return. The, uh, meeting over to Dr. Ruth.
Uh, Dr. Coleman, um, thank you, and, um, before we begin, uh, do wanna take a second, um. Having a bucket of caution, uh, I'm zooming in tonight, I was in a close contact situation. And the same way that we instructed our teachers and students and parents to follow, uh, COVID protocols. I'm, uh, doing the same, so, uh, apologize, I'm not face to face, but I have an outstanding staff that's got us set up, so we're in great hands. Um, so at this time, uh, we need to conduct, uh, business, uh, election of board officers. Um, do I have any motions on the floor? Uh, yes, can I recognize Ms. Holloway?
Um, Dr. Livingston, I'd like to, um, nominate board officers, that all officers as they are now to secede themselves for the next year. With this Captain Coleman as chairman. Do we, are we doing it all in one or just one? Can we do it all in one?
Yes, ma'am, we can, uh, we consult you with, um, with, 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 um, legal counsel and we can advance the motion.
Okay, well, my motion would be that all officers as they stand now will secede themselves for the following year. With this Captain Coleman as chairman, Arlie Curry as vice chairman, and Chrissy Nichols as second here.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, to maintain the current slate of board officers for the new year, do I have a second?
A second, ma'am.
We have a second, do we have any discussion? Okay, uh, hearing of discussion, I'm called for the vote, all those in favor of the motion to maintain the current slate of officers for the next new year of, um, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, do we have any opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, I, um, let the, let it, uh, the record reflect, um, the pushing passes, we will maintain a current slate of officers. Dr. Coleman, I will, congratulations, and I will hand it back over.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Dr. Livingston, thank you all, um. We, uh, I appreciate that, uh, compliment and service. Uh, next on the agenda is the swearing in of board officers. You're gonna have to do two, two partials.
I'm gonna keep my social distance and move my mask. If you will raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties.
Exercise the duties.
Of Salute School District One.
Of Salute School District One.
Board officers.
Board officers.
The office of which I have been elected.
The off, which I've been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
Protect. Okay.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So have you got it?
So have you got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, good. Next on the agenda is the. Next on, next, next on the agenda is the audit report, Dr. Livingston.
Just may, um, Dr. Coleman, the board should have, uh, received that email and drafted the, uh, about, uh, what's yours audit. Uh, I assume you have a hard time being plugged here at this point in time, and if, uh, Captain Coleman would, would, uh, would, uh, introduce our, uh, speeches tonight, I would presume the audits.
I would like to introduce to everyone our, um, author, Ken Martin, he'll come up and give us a tour for the fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm going to loop this just for a few minutes, and, uh, I hopefully I can project out enough that you can hear me from there. Uh, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here, we've worked with the district now for over years, and, uh, we consider it a real privilege to work with you as your independent auditors. Uh, we did again this year perform an audit following generally accepted auditing standards, as well as governmental auditing standards. And those standards guide us in all aspects of the audit, but fundamentally, they require us to do enough audit work, gather enough audit evidence, that we can give our opinion on the financial statements. So the focus of our audit is gathering audit evidence, enough evidence to express an opinion on your financials. Uh, the financials are the districts, uh, they are your responsibility to present, they're your responsibility to present fairly. And it's our responsibility to audit those and then give you a report on those financials. Uh, as you, the board, and as management of the, of the district, consider your responsibility to present the financial statements fairly. Probably the key factor in doing that is establishing a strong system of internal controls. Uh, that's a system of processes and procedures, uh, checks and balances, that will safeguard your assets and will make sure that your, your financials are presented fairly. And since that's the key factor, that's where we start in the audit process. We gain an understanding of your control system, and then throughout the audit, we test it. It's important that you have a system, but it's just as important that folks are following it. And I'm happy to tell you that based on our understanding of your system, and then our tests of your system, we can report that you've got a strong system in place. Clearly, uh, your leadership understands the importance of that system, and over the years, they've implemented very careful controls, and they communicated those controls across the whole district. So the folks are following it, we didn't have any instances where folks weren't complying with that system of controls. So that's a very important hurdle to get over, and you all did very well in, in, in achieving that hurdle. But we then moved what I call routine audit tests, we're testing your assets, your liabilities, revenues, expenses, again, all of that with an eye toward gathering audit evidence. And much of that, for instance, your revenues, we can confirm virtually all of your revenues, either with the state, the federal government, or the county. And so, uh, there's a lot of money that's flowing through, but we're able to test it fairly simply on the revenue side, with confirming with these various bodies, uh, what they say they gave you, uh, how they say you should have recorded that, and we determine that you've recorded it correctly. Uh, based on all of our work, and we were here, uh, at the district for about a week, we have a, we have a team of four of us that come, so we spent a lot of time testing. And based on all that work, we're able to give an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. Uh, that's commonly called a clean opinion, it's the best opinion we can give. Uh, so, and I've done that before, I've stood before you and given you an unmodified opinion, and I like to emphasize that, uh, you shouldn't just take that for granted. It's a result of a lot of hard work, uh, really day by day, transaction by transaction, that your folks are putting in, doing things the correct way, so that we can come in, do all of our work, and then give you such a, such a strong, uh, an unmodified opinion. Another important part of the audit is our work, like your federal funding, you get about just under four million dollars in, uh, in, uh, federal funding, and that comes in about ten different programs. And rather than the federal government sending the auditors for each one of those programs, they ask us to audit those programs specifically. And so each year, we pick one or two of your major programs, this year, we focused on all of your food services programs, and then also you had a new program, the S R, the COVID nineteen S R funds. And so we focus on those programs, and each of those programs has very specific compliance requirements, and we test in detail those programs to make sure you're complying with all those requirements. Uh, if we have any issues, we've gotta let you know as a board, we also would have to let the federal, the specific federal agency know as well. And so I'm happy to tell you that, uh, based on all of our work we did on particularly those two programs, uh, we had no compliance findings, and we're able to give an unmodified opinion on that part of the audit as well. So, and, and if we consider the work we did and, and what we found, I can give a strongly positive report, that your internal control structure is strong, uh, we have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves, and then an unmodified opinion on your federal funds and your compliance with that. So, uh, our report to you is a strongly positive one. I might just spend just a couple minutes, I know we're now late January, talking about a fiscal year that ended back in June, but I do wanna just highlight our perspective of your actual operating results, your financial results for that year. And, uh, if you'd like to flip to page sixteen, in that, I believe this report now is running over a hundred pages, but page sixteen, uh, gives, it's, it's really the, it's the revenues, the expenses that have flowed through the district. And I, I won't spend much time, I just wanna highlight a couple things for you. You can see there that the total revenue this year, uh, twenty seven million, six hundred eighty three thousand, so almost twenty eight million dollars. That total revenue is actually down slightly from the previous year, but that's a little misleading, a year ago, two thousand nineteen, we got a, really a special million dollar EIA grant, and so that boosted our revenue for nineteen. Uh, this year, we were down about four hundred, but if you, but if you exclude that grant, our revenue would have been up about six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand dollars this year. So that's about a two percent increase, so we had, we had a nice increase in our, in our revenue this year, and we were able to hold our expenses pretty much in check. Expenses actually went up about a hundred forty eight thousand dollars from the previous year. So I, I point your attention in the left-hand column there, the general fund, that's really what we focus on. Down toward the bottom, you can see general fund change in fund balance was a billion five hundred four thousand, so that means that, uh, with the revenues we brought in, what we spent, we actually had a positive a billion five this year. So that's, that's an outstanding result for the district, especially, uh, we know what we went through this last year, educationally, operationally, and financially. So, so our assessment is that in a, in a very difficult year, extra expenses, expenses we didn't expect to have, uh, management did a very good job of budgeting, and then living within that budget, being very careful on the expense side, so that you were able to have a good positive result like this. Uh, those members of the board that have been on the board for a number of years will recall that it was only a few years ago, when our fund balance was at a level where we were below the state mandated level. And we've made, we've had three straight, very strong years, to where our fund balance now is at five point three million dollars. Uh, and that's been some very careful budgeting and operating for the last several years to get to that point, and that represents about twenty nine percent of our annual expenses. Uh, you may recall that the state absolutely mandates eight point three percent of your expenses be in your fund balance. Really, the, the GFOA recommends about seventeen percent level, and so we're well above that. I think, uh, particularly with what we've seen in the last year, we think that's a reasonable level, that's not, uh, uh, that is well within where we think it should be. We usually say we like a minimum of fifteen percent up to about thirty percent, so you're, you're right there in that sweet spot, and, uh, we commend you for that, and we would, we would, uh, emphasize that, uh, the battle's not over. That we've got another year of trying to be very careful with our expenses, so that we can, again, uh, we're not adding to the bottom line just to be doing that, we're adding to the bottom line so that we have a healthy fund balance, uh, for emergencies, for other opportunities, uh, that we, that we might have. So, again, we commend you for the, for the hard work to get where you are today. And I know I've just thrown a lot at you very quickly, but I'd be happy to answer questions either on the audit process, or on a little bit I said about the actual financial results.
Any questions? No questions?
I don't have a question, but I, I do have, uh, in the past, or in fact, last year's report, we had a, we had a specific page, is that what athletics, revenue, because I remember it being somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars, and expenditures, and I didn't see that in this one, and I have asked, and this is just for those, I guess specifically, I have asked, uh, Dr. Livingston, um, to get some information for me, and he's told me they're gonna, they're gonna provide it tomorrow, as I understand, for all of us. And I guess my comment, I just wanna let the rest of the board know that is, is, it seems to me that our revenues for, I guess athletics would have to be down, but our expenditures should be pretty much the same, and I'm just wondering what money comes from. And that's not really a question, and I understand you can't answer that, that that's, that's a.
I'm, I'm flipping through here, uh, quickly to see if I, if I can point out.
Well, it's on the page eighty-one, it's people activities.
That's right, and, and, uh.
How about that, is that okay? And, uh, I gotta put a hand, I think.
Who's up next?
Are we back now?
I'm back too.
And Dr. Coleman, real, real quick, if you want to know, that, uh, the Salute County Student District Board of Trustees has about one hundred and seventy years and two months of experience. Uh, so once again, we just wanna take a sec just to thank, uh, all of our board members for all the work and the outstanding job that y'all do, um, that we provided y'all, but thank you very much, Dr. Coleman.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Livingston, um, the, uh, yeah, as, as, as board members, um, we commit to acting the principles in our work, and so what this is, is.
Thank you, you know me, there.
Something is not within our control.
And we will, uh, we will have this for, uh, the rest of our board members to sign, and write a date.
And then it's posted. Why it's posted by?
Yeah, and then it will be posted, um. Where you can see. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the election of SCSBA board legislative contacts. Any volunteers?
Thirty-six oh nine, and House Bill thirty-six, uh, ten, uh, thirty-six oh nine is the legislation that addresses the teacher step increases for this current year. And of course, the next piece of legislation deals with primary, um, status assessments. Uh, we have reached out to our obligation, sleep, uh, we do support, uh, and, and, and pay rates for our teachers.
Step increases for this year, uh, and we need to, we need to also remember that this covers our certified staff, so we have our non-certified staff, but we do, we need to consider the cost of that when we are working on our, our budget. Um, and also as they go into the, uh, into the next budget year. So, um, yeah, we, we're very much appreciative of this, and that, if you read this, they are taking fifty million to provide the step increases, so we will, as a board, and to look and, and see what it will cost, uh, for all of our employees, um, competitors, and also we have to think about annualizing that next year too, in our budget. So, um, we, um, we're very, very appreciative of those, of that, because our teachers certainly deserve it, all our employees do. And the session that, um, that there are, the South County School Board Association puts out a good legislative update, also, uh, every week, you should be getting it. Next is operations, our budget update, Dr. Livingston.
Uh, yes, I would ask if, uh, Mr. Coleman would come up and, and, uh, you guys, so for you, uh, we're having our current budget that y'all will see during the hours.
Okay, can y'all move your hand? Says, can y'all, okay. Um, I was gonna start with, because we do not have a meeting in December, so I was going to start with in November, our report, um, that would have been submitted in December, had we had, uh, been more done. But, just to go through it quickly, um, yes, it's for the month of November, and our revenue for our local was one million twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, which is about fourteen percent of our budget. Um, our state money was four million four hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five, which was thirty-seven percent of our state money, and then our federal received was fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-eight, about nine percent today. Um, altogether, we received five million four hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which is about twenty-eight percent of the projected revenue. Um, for our expenditures, um, we have, the total expenditures at that point was six million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand and seventy dollars, or thirty-five percent of our budget. Um, if y'all would like, I go, I can go through the breakdown of those. Um, your salary and benefits was at eight, was four million one hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred, or thirty-five percent. Your, um, benefits was one million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine, or about thirty-two percent. Your utility expenditure was two hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-three, or forty-five percent of our budget. Repair and maintenance was fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-one, or fifty-four percent. Communication was twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight, or thirty-two percent of our budget. Purchasing services was two hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five, which was thirty-four percent. Supplies was two hundred and forty-five thousand, which is two hundred and fifty, I mean, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven, which is fifty percent of our budget. And then it's equipment, we had no equipment purchases through our general fund. Insurance was a hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifteen, or ninety-nine percent. And then other expenditures was about eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve, which is about thirty-six percent of our budget. Is there any questions on the November board report?
So, in November, by November, we spent fifty percent of our supplies, of our budget for supplies.
Yes, sir.
And that's like all this, if you're October, November, four months.
That's correct, and supplies are kinda like your, um, maintenance, in the sense that you kinda come out strong, and then you start kinda backing off, as you keep going out further, you buy less supplies. Because you, you kinda start off getting yourself built up, and then that'll kinda start slowing down a little bit more, and then that's what kinda then balances it back out to that hundred percent by the end. So it all this time looks a little more at the very beginning, um, as far as in the percentage of where you're at at that point. But it should, federal revenue received is thirty-four thousand seven hundred and three dollars, or about twenty-one percent today. Um, altogether, we have received seven million seven hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, in your expenditure side of that, we have expensed already eight million four hundred and one thousand four hundred and eleven dollars, which is about forty-two percent. Your salaries and benefits, in your salaries, we spent five million thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars, or forty-two percent. And then, in your fringe, we have spent two million one hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and sixteen, or forty percent. Um, utilities, we've spent two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, which is fifty-one percent. For your, um, repairs and maintenance, we have spent fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-nine, or fifty-seven percent. Communication, we've spent thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-one, or forty-four percent. Purchases, we have spent three hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, or thirty-nine percent. Supplies, we spent two hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-three, or fifty-eight percent. On insurance, we've spent one hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five, ninety-nine percent. And then for other expenditures, we spent a hundred and two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, at forty-three percent. Is there any questions on that?
Any questions?
For that information for our future, very proud.
Dr. Coleman, in my face.
Next on the agenda is, uh, the Holloway Elementary. Can't hear you. There we go.
Dr. Coleman, can y'all hear?
Can now.
Yeah, uh, real quick, before we move. Yeah, uh, real quick before we move.
Go ahead.
Dr. Coleman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, before we move forward, I, um, I did not get a chance, um, just to thank, uh, Ms. Cole pleasure, her staff, our principals, our directors, uh, and all of our staff were, uh, working together again to, uh, finish last year with another very strong, uh, helping fund balance. So I'm very appreciative of everyone for recognizing the financial hardship that we were in several years ago. Uh, and just definitely taking advantage just to thank her and her staff and our principal again for working together. So we're in a little better, uh, financial footing, so just wanted to put that on the record.
All right, thank you. And thank y'all for your hard work. All right.
Uh, and that, uh, one of the, one of the bright spots of our monthly board meeting, okay, I'm not there to, to view it, but, um, we will start with having our school spotlights, um, everyone to recognize all the great work that our schools are doing. Uh, and we will start off, we are following Elementary, and I'll turn it over to the principal, Ms. Jennifer Thomas family.
Okay, I'm just moving around, can you hear me? This is going to be out of my element and I'm talking with my hands. Um, as you can see on the Promethean panel, it starts off by saying, cornered at heart and tiger proud. And so we want to first, want to say thank you to our school board members, um, for all your support that you've given, not only to Hollywood Elementary, but to Saluda County Schools. Thank you for your hard work for helping our school district to be successful. Um, this year more than ever, we've been embracing the hashtag one Saluda feeling at HES. And we'd like to say that we are cornered at heart and tiger proud. And so we have definitely been embracing the hashtag one Saluda jeans day on Monday. It's been a very uplifting, um, way to build, I feel like, the floor within our building and just, um, giving that sense of, um, joy to our teachers. So thank you, Dr. Livingston, for that. From the beginning in August, um, I shared this picture with our faculty and staff because they knew, I had them all raise their hands. And we all knew that this year we were going to be on the, an amazing roller coaster, one of the greatest roller coasters of our lives, many ups and many downs. And, um, I, I, I want to totally say thank you to the staff at Hollywood, I could be on staff at Hollywood because they have embraced the ups and downs, the roller coaster ride. And I definitely cannot move it without them, they're amazing. Um, they get one, ten percent on this roller coaster ride this year, and so for that, I say thank you very much. Um, tonight, we wanted to highlight not the downs, but we want to highlight the ups that we've experienced at Hollywood. And so right now in this moment, um, at Hollywood, we are currently have, um, an enrollment of one hundred and forty-seven students. Um, face-to-face, we have four hundred and thirteen students, and our full distance learners, we have thirty-four students. Um, the focus for this year has just been total engagement for three, for three areas, academics, social, emotional, and homeschool relationships. Um, we knew coming out of what we have embraced March through May, that this was going to be a very different year. And so those were our three focuses for this year. Um, so here's just a snapshot of some HES happenings, um, on our great moments at Hollywood on the up part of our roller coaster. Technology has been fore and foremost our academic professional development for our teachers, as well as, um, enhancement for our students. Um, almost all of our PD this year for our teachers has been, um, making sure they are proficient and feel very comfortable with technology. Um, Google classroom, Google suites, Google meets, um, making sure that they, um, are using Google extensions, the variety of Google extensions to make online teaching very successful for our students. And not just for our full distance learner teachers, but for all of our teachers. So in any instance, when they are having to be in our distance learner teachers and in our distance learners, they can embrace that challenge. And so that has been a tremendous effort this year on our faculty. Um, we have had our cluster PD meetings have been on technology focus. Um, we have tech Tuesdays and Thursdays that would, um, were voluntary, for the most part, for our, um, faculty, our teachers. And many would show up just to learn what candy would do, or what this new extension would do to make online teaching or technology easier and, um, faster in their classroom. Um, not only for our, um, students that were full distance learners, because they, it, it's been amazing watching our kindergarten through fifth grade students that are full distance learners, how they have embraced the technology, how they are learning each and every day, but also our face-to-face students. The enhancement with the technology and the learning that they have, that have been taking place in the classroom has helped them. I feel like not just for this year, for the COVID era, we could say that, but for many years to come, our technologies enhancing their learning, um, skills in the classroom as well. Um, another focus has been our early interventions. We knew very, you know, upfront that the loss of instruction, the new skill introduction, introduction of new skills that would, would have taken place March through May of last year, students didn't really get that new skill introduction. It was more of just trying to keep the, um, concepts that they had learned in place. And so we knew we were going to have to back off, look at our data, and, um, especially for our early learners that are learning to read and learning to write. And so we have really focused on some early interventions for our kindergarten, fourth day through our, um, second grade students with, um, and our early childhood interventionists who serve the fourth day and five day students that are identified, focusing on upper case, lower case letters and sounds. That was, um, the, the majority, and then we tagged their development would be her focus. Um, our reading tutor, we were able to employ a reading tutor mid-October, um, which was great. And she has been focusing on our first and second graders, um, through our fast bridge assessment data and our MTSS. We have been able to, um, she has been able to serve, um, many students, about third to three to be exact, first and second graders to, um, help strengthen their text level, their reading level, their phonetic awareness, their phonemic awareness, and, um, to, to catch them up. So some quick data I wanted to share, this wasn't going to be all about data, because I know next, um, in February, we're going to be sharing the school data. But, um, first grade reading text level data, fifty-eight percent of all of our first grade students are reading all grade level at, according to our district benchmark at this point. And ninety-one percent of all of our first grade students have made two or more text level jumps since September. So that's definitely a celebration. Um, our second grade reading text level data, eighty-five percent of all of our second grade students are reading on grade level, according to the district benchmarks at this time. And eighty-four percent of all of second grade students have made two or more text level jumps since September. So we knew in those early readers, um, early learners, we had to help move them forward and, and with our interventions in the classroom and with our reading tutor, that was definitely helped. And then just the reality of our, um, balanced literacy program that happens daily in the classroom. Another one of our focus that we wanted to continue, we knew it would look a little different, but we wanted to make sure we were still having a very strong PBIS program, positive behavior interventions programs program. Um, usually we are more accustomed to school-wide celebrations, um, students gathering, and so we had to do that a little different this year, but we are continuing with our ticket system. Students don't earn tickets, they still get their Friday, um, ticket reward if their ticket is drawn. We just do it by classes, um, we have carts rolling up and down the hallways to, to make the snow cone, that's like making the snow cones in the hall and taking it to one student in the classroom at a time instead of doing it in the cafeterias we normally do. So we have, um, continued with our classroom incentive parties where the students, the class, pre, um, have to earn ticket, PBIS tickets as they are being seen in the hallways or in the classrooms, um, rocking and making sure they're doing a great job. They've earned tickets to, to get, um, a classroom award. And so we are continuing with that. That's in a picture of, of classroom that received, um, they were, they were working towards a popcorn and movie party, and that's what they got. Um, positive office referrals, or we encourage teachers to, um, send in names of students or send in positive office referrals of students that are just called rocking and going over and beyond, um, in the classroom. And so we just wanted to keep that alive and going on at Hollywood. We were able to celebrate a rocking on the green, again, it looked different. Um, usually we have grade levels competing against each other and, and just having a wonderful time for the day. This rocking on the green celebrated forty-five days of World Free. And so, um, they did get to celebrate during the day, but they just celebrated with their class. They had stations that would rotate to outside. And so again, just keeping that alive and part of who we are and making sure the students are, are, you know, a part of that as well. Not only have we been rocking, being respectful, organized, proper, knowledgeable, safe at Hollywood, we have been trying to rock kindness with the Golden Gate Initiative. Um, we put the pledge each month, um, January's pledge of I will be in charge of my own happiness. We make sure that that's in the classroom, that's on our rock show, our morning rock show, um, the guidance program, um, curriculum that is like uses is, is using the Golden Gate movement, and, um, it's been, it's been a blessing. I think students truly are being more generally kind, and so, and so is the faculty. Uh, that's two pictures of our teachers being loved, and so they get loved for, for doing some kindness, um, throughout the week. And it's, um, it's, teachers have been loved, students have been loved, cafeteria workers, um, so we are definitely trying to do our part to make sure we're rocking kindness. We were able to celebrate fifty day celebration, and this year more than ever, this was, um, just an excitement to say we have been fifty days face-to-face, um, in, at Hollywood and Saluda County Schools. And so throughout the day, and it looked a little different, but we did celebrate, um, in the classroom, um, with, with dressing up, the, um, the fifty fun facts and trivia's. We had this sort of ice cream, root beer flights to the students. Um, we had a time of, uh, dance, a sock hop in the classroom, but we all enjoyed it somehow together. We had, um, some virtual, um, things going on in the classrooms, but we did celebrate that. We did not want that day to pass. Um, and that's been the big thing, we don't, we didn't want days to pass, you know, like to quick, celebrate, um, successes and moments in our school. We wanted to continue with that. Um, we've also been able to continue celebrating successes by having our honor ceremonies. We usually again, we gather in a gym, two grade levels at a time, so you have six, up to six classes. Of course, we didn't do that this year, so we might have to sneak outside the box. We take our card, roll it into the classrooms, um, and go for the lanyards and pens. Students earn lanyards for their academic successes and pens for different things, be student hunt, or a honor roll, or a beyond roll, or reading text level jumps. Uh, we even held a virtual, um, ceremony, you can see a picture, this is of a class, one of our full distance learning class for the first time, we, um, we minions, once and myself, and we celebrated the pens and successes with them. So when they come back to Hollywood, that they hope for one day soon, so most of them came back, but in Hollywood, they'll have their lanyard with their pens they earned for this year. Um, we had our Veteran's Day ceremony, it looked a little different, but it was virtual, and we all celebrated at eight oh five that morning. We stopped what we were doing, we, um, Ms. Jackson heads up our Veteran's Day program, it's very special to her heart. And so she had teachers and students, um, and even, um, staff members help create a Veteran's Day, um, video for us all to make sure we were celebrating Veteran's Day together. Continue with our community partnerships. Um, this is a picture of our fourth day class, our steps, wanted to donate, um, books to all of our fourth day and five day students. And so they were able to come in along with Saluda County Library, SC Upstate. And so just to spread a little joy in our, um, near Christmas time, that was actually near Christmas time. Um, community partnerships, something else that I feel like is very, very important, our backpack ladies, we are able to, um, we, we have forty backpack ladies, so forty of our students, some face-to-face and some full distance learner. Our community's local church itself on backpack ladies that go home on Friday. Um, it's like, like just some, um, small meals and snacks for them to have over the weekend. So we did have forty, which is a larger number than usual. And then this year for our angel giving tree, our community members and series department helped the, um, helping with third and three students to have Christmas. So I thought that was pretty awesome. We spelled, we celebrated Christmas kindly to go along with the Golden Gate movement. Um, our literacy night was Hollywood from the holidays, was a virtual literacy night. And so, um, we had a guest reader, we had a gingerbread man showing up each day to entice the students. He was in the car line, he was in the bus line, enticing them to, to join our virtual literacy night, which was filled with, um, each student that participated receiving a packet with gingerbread cookies, some hot chocolate, um, and craft, or a template for a gingerbread house. Um, and so that video they watched, they had a gingerbread decorating contest. This, our, our two pictures, the picture of what, what the elf had on, is a fifth grader that participated, and he was the winner for his class. And then these two, two students, um, side by side in front of the Christmas tree are full distance learners that participated. And then they were awarded because they were chosen to stay in class for the gingerbread house winner. So a little different, but it worked, and, um, we had great participation with that. Hollywood's Christmas musical is always something special at our school and in our community, and it's how we end, um, the, before we leave for a break. Of course, we didn't do that this year, and our students really have not been singing in music. Um, Mr. Wilson has done a lot with instruments, um, and, and trying to incorporate that more with, with the students. And so he kept it a secret from all of us, the students kept it a secret. And they, each class have learned, um, a music, a musical, a piece of, piece of holiday music, Christmas music. And they have, um, performed it with their instruments. And the morning of, um, the last day of school, he sent it out, made the announcement, they were still going to have our Hollywood program. I think, Dr. Coleman, you were there that morning, and it was just, it's, it was just a great moment for everybody because we were kind of bummed to not have in our Christmas musical, and the kids loved it, they, they loved being able to keep the secret. Uh, we were able to share it with our, um, family, um, communities as well. And in August, I did share with you one of our biggest, uh, exciting makeovers that we were going to do at Hollywood or something we were adding to our Hollywood school, was our HES playground makeover. And I showed you a few pictures of, but, um, Ms. White, our, our teacher, was helping to, to, um, do along with PACE. PACE, our parent organization, helped fund the project. And then Ms. Jackson and a few other key faculty members came together with some, um, volunteers, and they created the HES playground makeover. So when you come to Hollywood, you need to go home, be in past all part of our playground and, um, enjoy some of the obstacles that they created. And this was just created for, you know, thinking about students going out to recess, how do you teach students how to socially distance during recess? Well, hmm, that sounds hard. Again, they're with their class, but this was just a great way to give them opportunities to move at recess, something new, something to look forward to. And so we are very excited about how this project turned out, the HES extreme playground makeover. So I want to show you the video again on my end. So I want to show you the video again on my phone. And so back to the roller coaster. This was definitely a roller coaster project, because it was probably the beginning of August. And I was like, Ms. White, I have an idea, just let's talk about this. And she just went along with it. A woman did it before school started, it rained, couldn't paint while it was raining. It was very high, I mean, they painted in very high conditions. So when I say they did it one hundred and ten percent, that is, I'm not joking. If they did it, it's awesome, you have to come play on our playground. We are excited about that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. White. The playground was very vital. Dr. Livingston?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, Ms. Thomas.
Next on the agenda is destruction. Dr. Livingston, BD organization board first reading.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Colman, we need to clean up board policy. BD organization of the board to make an amendment so that it complies with the election law fifty-nine dash nineteen dash three fifteen, which states that board members' permissions commence a week after certification. And this is will also allow for this policy to align with the policy BBB.
All right. Any more motion? Motion by Ms. Holliday, her second.
I'll say it there.
Second by Mr. Jordan. All right, name discussion. All right. All of us in favor, the first reading for policy BD organization board. Please stand by raising your hand. And the first, first unanimous, thank you. Thank you for correcting that, Dr. White. Next on the agenda is, next on the agenda is school reopening plan update, Dr. Livingston.
Okay, yes, ma'am. And I'm going to kind of combine my update with the update of our reopening plan as well. Before I start about school reopening, do you want to let the board know that DEHEC reached out to me about a week, about a week ago? And on this Wednesday and Thursday, DEHEC is going to use the parking lot at the rear of the high school gym for an appointment-only COVID vaccine clinic for people seventy years or an older and for our first responders. We're just very glad that we're able to off our facilities to help our community. And DEHEC has already reached out with dates in February for the second round. So we're very thankful DEHEC reached out to us so that we could provide that service to our community. Also, we are still waiting to be contacted by DEHEC or our area hospitals to schedule appointment times for our teachers and staff members that wish to get the COVID vaccine. In that same vein, on Friday, the state department reached out to each school as we pretended, and we were asked to survey our entire staffs to see how many of our staff members would actually get the vaccine when they available. So our hope is by providing this information, that will speed the process up so that vaccine can be given to those staff members that would like to take it. As you know, this past Tuesday, January nineteenth, we started our second semester. We currently have one thousand nine hundred and forty-one students at face-to-face, and two hundred and sixty-eight students are still full distance learners. That is eighty-eight percent of our population, two populations back in our buildings. While we have seen a small increase in positivity cases, our schools continue to address this on a case-by-case basis. And our students and classes that need to very smoothly transition to inter distance learners, our principals and teachers have done a great job of this. And that's something, I mean, after speaking with our school nurses and looking at the data, to this point, we have no evidence that operating our schools face-to-face has contributed to any COVID spread. Whenever we have students that have to go home due to close contact, none of those students to this point have tested positive due to exposure. So that just emphasizes the great job that our custodians continue to do in keeping our buildings clean, as well as our teachers practicing those good hand washing measures. School districts across the state were involved in our preliminary amount of our second round of COVID relief funding. The state department has placed a strong emphasis that these funds, that a large portion of these funds be used to address any student academic gaps. Of course, as you know, the district has hired additional support staff to address gaps in reading. And I'm now working with principals to see how we can strengthen and expand our academic support. We actually have a Google meets meeting tomorrow. Need gaps or ways that we can give any additional, we'll be presenting. Our academic data will be showing where we started the school year and very proud of the gains that our principals and our teachers have made. So that data will be shown in addition to our pre and post data that was mandated by the general assembly. And we will also be providing a tentative update of what each school is not only currently doing, but also some initiatives that we will be beginning shortly, as well as other initiatives so that we can address, again, any student losses or any student academic losses that we have experienced to this point. So as always, we want to be very good stewards of the taxpayer's money, both at the local, state, and federal level. So we will also be laying out a plan to the board so you're fully aware of how we plan to move forward with the second round of COVID funding. And that's kind of my update at this point, Dr. Colman.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Livingston. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report, Lieutenant Sherman. You ready?
No, ma'am. We saw, I ended up.
I have one question about the extent of the COVID leave.
Yes. Yes, Dr. Colman, that was another area that we were asked by Superintendent Spearman. And even though the federal law has expired that granted the initial ten days, we're going to carry that forward into second semester. And obviously, we will treat that on a case-by-case basis, but Superintendent Spearman has asked us to use these additional funds to support any staff members that may be out due to COVID.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Livingston? Ms. Nichols or Ms. Perry, Dr. Perry here? Any questions? All right.
Let me say that one more time about muffin saving.
Yes, you know, as you know, the federal law that granted every employee the ten days expired December thirty-first. But we are going to extend that throughout second semester. And that was an ask that was also made by Superintendent Spearman. That school district utilized the second round of COVID funding it needed to cover any costs that would occur. So right now, everybody has ten days, and there's also the possibility that we could extend that additional ten days to those individuals, you know, that may have been exposed to COVID. So it is our goal to protect our staff members and to not deduct people's pay once they're on a public leave.
Thank you. Good job.
All right, any further questions? All right, any questions?
Chairman, we don't have any other questions. And I'm new to this, but can we back up? Can I do that?
Question, anything on the gentleman item?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can ask Bush.
I just want to back up, and I want to tell you, Principal Thomas, thank you. I got sitting here thinking about that. And in a year, we could have threw our hands up and said, I can't do it. We can let it go. You didn't do that, and your staff didn't do that. And I just want to commend you for everything that you're doing out there. It doesn't go unnoticed, and I feel remiss if I didn't stand up and say it. So thank you for all you do. Everybody's working hard, but tonight was Hollywood's spotlight. Thank you for all you do. I really appreciate it. And so do everybody.
Thank you, George. Any comments, any other comments? Thank you again, thank all of you for being here. And we appreciate all your hard work. And we look forward to, you know, hearing from you next week. I know you've been for next month, and you've been working hard. And our students are learning. We appreciate you, everything you're doing every day for our students and keeping everyone safe, helping. All right, anything else? And Mr. Jordan, may we now adjourn to the second. Second by Commander Moore. All of us in favor, signified by raising your hand. We now adjourn. Thank you again for your service.